Okay, good evening to the, welcome to the January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Board of Selectmen meeting.
Is your mic on there?
Hello? There you go. Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January two thousand twenty-four Orange Board of Selectmen, and Happy New Year to everybody here and out there. All right, in the event of an emergency, the emergency exit is the stairway that I think everybody came down tonight. If that doesn't work, you can go out the hallway to the rear, which leads you to the staircase that will put you in the parking lot by the firehouse, or you could go up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors and out the front, which will put you in front of the town hall. But those are our three points of, uh, emergency. With that said, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'll start on my left today.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Good evening, John Carangelo.
Good evening, Ralph Okunquist.
And Denny, Secretary to the Board.
Good evening, PJ Shanley.
Okay, thank you very much. Public participation, public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow two minutes per speaker for that. Is there anybody for public participation?
Tom Pizzano, five-two-three, Fairway Road, Orange, Connecticut. Just want to bring this up, I'm sure it'll come up later at a committee meeting, but it's not on the agenda. There's a Fred Wolf Park Safety Meeting on January twenty-fourth, uh, which is, I believe, a Wednesday at seven-thirty in this room. It'd be nice if we had all the public participating in that solution. I know many people didn't have much input into where the playground was located, but now is your opportunity to come up and, and look at the safety issues. BL Company's done a wonderful job, and they have a nice presentation, so all are welcome, and we hope we have a good crowd. The only question I had, and maybe it'll be answered tonight, was this document published in any of the local papers? It would be nice to, you know, to do that. BL Company talked about that, but I'm not sure they sent them anything. Okay, thank you.
I'm sure the committee will report on that when it is their time, as Mr. Pizzano is not on the committee, although he wishes he was. Is there anybody else for public participation? Seeing none at the table, Mitchell?
Just the shredding day is going to be April twenty-seventh, so people can put that in their calendars. We'll have the shredding, we'll have the collection of mattresses, we're going to have the, um, Orange Community Women there, um, and we're also going to have the hazardous waste, uh, which is most, it was very important, the hazardous waste, uh, collection, which will be behind High Plains, and that's the Saturday morning, April twenty-seventh, from nine to noon.
I've received a couple calls, and you're the person to ask. No, no, no. On the food waste thing, are we getting any much activity on that that people are wondering?
We have. I don't know how many times the bins have been picked up. I know they've been picked up at least once, and the first time, Michael, I spoke to him and said, hey, how, how much we get? He goes, I don't know, we took the first batch out of there, we didn't charge it. So, so we got the first batch out of there, and then, um, I'm not sure what's been picked up since. I'm there every week, um, the bins, there's stuff in there, and it's, um, we're just trying to spread the word as best as possible, and hopefully people watching tonight know that we have, uh, at the top of the transfer station near the, near the hopper, there's four green bins, uh, there's some signage there as well, we've had, put, put up there, I think that's certainly helped, um, to locate, um, where people can put food scraps. They can, I know it sounds unusual, they can be put in plastic bags in the, um, in the hopper. It's preferred that you just dump them in the hopper and just leave them loose, but plastic bag, if it's wrapped in a plastic bag, it's okay, paper bags are not, okay? And, um, you know, it's a program that we're trying to, you know, divert as much of our food waste out of the, the municipal solid waste as possible, and, um, and move from there. Are there any specific problems or questions?
No, no, no. People were wondering how it was, but, uh, on a note to what you just said about the plastic bags, a lot of the grocery stores now, the produce you buy is in a recyclable, uh, plastic bag, it's made out of a material that, uh, breaks down more readily, and, um, so if people are buying, uh, produce at, uh, the grocery stores, watch, and you'll see a difference in the type of bag, it's a more yellowish bag, it, it feels a little different, too, but it's, don't tie a knot in the end of it when, after you put your produce in there, so that when you get home, you're not ripping that bag open, and you can save those and use those for that product, and, uh, it works, but that's something that started to come in the industry after, after they did the, uh, uh, five and ten cent, uh, fee on the T-shirt bags. They've come out with these, uh, other bags that, uh, are biodegradable bag in the industry, so, just a thought on that.
One last thing, Jim, in case people are not aware, although I think most people are, um, when you buy your, your bottles and cans in the store today, going forward, it's ten cents deposit, so it also means it's ten cents to redeem. Connecticut has joined a few other states, and the understanding is, from looking at the, the statistics of other states, that when the deposit's at ten cents, the redeemable rates are much higher than they are when the fi, they're five cents, so I encourage people to redeem their bottles and cans through ten cents on their way back. Get your money back.
And, uh, there again, this is going back and forth. A new business opened. On the Post Road, I don't know the number address, it's in the same building with the, uh, Forma Kinko's, uh...
Right beyond Ronay's, three ninety, three ninety-one Boston Post Road.
All right, three ninety-one Boston Post Road. You drive around to the rear of the building, and it's a new business that is open most every day, I think Monday through Saturday, nine to four-thirty, I believe. Saturday, I think it closes a little earlier, but you go there, you dump out your bottles and cans on a conveyor, it, it sorts them, um, even crushed cans and, uh, mashed cans and all, it doesn't matter, you dump them on this, and it, um, runs it through, and they pay you, uh, for what you're doing. So, anybody who had a party before the New Year and didn't get around to returning those nickel cans, you made five cents a can on them now if you bring them, and that store there, it's quicker than going to one of the grocery stores and feeding them into one of those machines one at a time, so...
Back and forth again, it is, it is mu, since I've been there many, a couple times, it is much quicker than the stores, I mean, you're out, you're in and out of there...
Did I describe it right?
You did. You're in and out of there in minutes, and the other thing is, unlike the grocery stores, so far, any can, bottle, whatever, has been taken, there's nothing rejected.
Do they pay you cash, or give you a deposit ticket? Okay.
Yeah, give you, yeah, pay you cash, you're out there in cash in minutes. So, it's really very convenient, and you don't have to get the frustration of, oh, this particular beer or soda came from a different, from a different store, and they're not taking this one, they take them all, so...
Okay, very good, good to know. Anybody else? All right, I have a few. One actually, I'm gonna, again, I'll go back to Mitch. We lost a stalwart soul of the town, uh, a couple weeks ago, Jean Vershap. She was a terrific and feisty lady in her day, and, uh, she was involved in many committees and all, and, um, um, always had the town first and foremost in her, uh, uh, thoughts, and, uh, she passed away, it was right around Christmas, I think it was, right before. So, do you remember what committees she was on? I mean, I know she did a bunch.
Well, first of all, she was elected to the Amity Board of Education and served there several times. In fact, it goes back long enough that she was elected at a town meeting, and we used to elect the Amity Board of Education members at a town meeting, that's when she was first elected, um, and I think she was the first Democrat in her own right to be elected, um, to the Amity Board. She also served on the, she was very, very active in the Friends at the Library, and served several years on the Orange Visiting Nurses Association Board, and then also was very, very instrumental in the Orange Foundation scholarship, and, um, did a lot, a lot over many, many decades for the town, so...
And the Orange Scholarship Fund also, both of them.
Right, right.
So, all right, thank you, thank you for that. All right, Monday, another Monday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, all town offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, however, the transfer station will be open. That's Monday, that'll be the third Monday in four weeks that town offices are closed. Reminder, taxes that are due, well, this is one, we've gotten a lot of calls on this, taxes that are due January first, two thousand twenty-four, you have until February first to pay those taxes. Taxes can be paid in person, by mail, but make sure you give yourself at least a week or ten days if you're putting it in the mailbox, or use the Dropbox at the tax office to leave the check payments only, and you can pay online, but there are third-party fees to do that, um, but you would go to, uh, www dot orange dash C T dot gov to, to, uh, the town website, and there's a Pay Tax Online box right there on the homepage on that, but you can pay it that way. We've seen a, a noticeable decrease in people's, the line of people standing in the hall waiting to pay. Usually by now, every day, there's a long line down the hall, and there has not been a line, one or two people maybe is it, so... Uh, message from the assessor, who is recuperating, he's doing very well, he will be back in the office within about two weeks, um, however, he is working. Notices concerning the two thousand twenty-three revaluation will be in the mail on Friday. There will be ample time to make appointments for informal hearings. J.F. Ryan, which is the company doing our revale, is completing the final phases of their contract. Copies of field cards reflecting new values will not be available until after the grand list is signed in late February. All inquiries should be addressed, be addressed to J.F. Ryan and Associates concerning the informal hearings. If you contact the assessor's office, or call the town hall, um, we'll pass you over there, and they can give more information if you want to get put on a list for an informal hearing. You can't file for an informal hearing till you decide if what you think the new assessed value is fair or not. And the part that people don't understand, if we see a dramatic increase in the valuations of property, there's an adjustment, because the Board of Finance has to work with a total grand list value. The Board of Finance then creates a budget, they cross these numbers over, which is where the mill rate will sit. So if the grand list rises, the mill rate decreases. Many people think if they get a new revaluation now, and it says their house went from being four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, that they're still going to pay taxes on the current thirty-two, three-three, I think is our mill rate, uh, currently. No, the odds are there will be an adjustment to the mill rate, the Board of Finance only, um, adjusts the mill rate accordingly to the needs of the budget, so don't panic, um, when you get it. Some people will make out one way, some will be the other way, but do not panic. With that said, that's all I have tonight for announcements. Thank you. Minutes to consider and act upon, the minutes of the December thirteenth regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you have a issue, please state, page, and paragraph. If not, we'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain, Ralph will abstain. Okay. So it's, uh, four, four to one, four oh one. Thank you. Item number one, to consider, huh? What? Three oh one. Well... I'm four. All right, comedy club over here. Item number one, to consider and act on request from the Lions Club to use the fairgrounds at High Plains Community Center for the annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, with a rain date of Saturday, March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and if the gym at High Plains Community Center is needed on the rain date to waive the customary rental fees for the use of the gym.
Should I speak?
Dr. Messina?
Mrs. Yoli, members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you for having me this evening, it's always, um, nice to be present here. So here we are, I think this might be either the fifty-first or fifty-second year that we've been doing the Easter egg hunt, uh, not me, of course.
It's more than that.
So, that's the situation at hand, either March twenty-third, hopefully we can have it on that date, if not, the thirtieth, uh, with the request for the gym at no charge to the Lions Club. We do distribute, uh, over ten thousand chocolate eggs, we have games, toys, uh, and the Easter bunny, and you know, every year I make the same request, if we have any members of the Board of Selectmen that would like to don the Easter bunny outfit, we're waiting for you, if not, we'll get somebody else.
Don't wait too long.
Don't wait too... But if we do have to use the gymnasium, we would appreciate it, uh, if there is no charge, since we're a nonprofit organization.
We will add that, and it is in the request.
Okay, very good.
But I will say, Lawrence, I think that it's more than fifty-one years, because I'm sixty-four.
That's right, you participated as a child.
My father was a Lion when they started here, and so I think you're probably sixty years or so.
That's a good possibility, Mrs. Yoli.
Because I remember, they used to do it down back in the Grove.
That's right.
Uh, there were now, nowhere near as many people back then.
It's become very popular.
I think you're probably sixty, not fifty.
All right, I'm gonna have to change the numbers on my report then, so... But thank you very much for your time, very much appreciated, and you're all welcome to come and join us, okay? So...
Thank you.
There's coffee and donuts that day. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept Dr. Messina's request? Motion's made, seconded and thirded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five unanimous. To consider and act on a facilitator agreement with Bay State Textiles Incorporated to allow for textile collection boxes on specific town properties. Mitch is going to speak to this, evidently the company we were using is no longer.
All right, thanks, Jim. So, the, um, Orange Recycling Committee has, uh, been looking into this, members of the recycling committee are here tonight, Mark Moyer, Chris Prokop, Laura Wu, and Susan Wyland are all here and supported this, I believe. So we've, um, uh, we, we noticed, or one of our members noticed, it was Chris in fact, that the box, the textile box that was at High Plains Community Center strangely disappeared sometime around Thanksgiving. Thought maybe it was out for repair, but inquiries from myself went, uh, to Simple Recycling, and I received this response, which says, thank you for your participation in our program. Unfortunately, due to economic conditions, Simple Recycling has discontinued service in your area, we have removed all of our bins from the area, a subsequent phone call revealed that they basically pulled out of the northeast, including Connecticut, obviously, uh, which left us with no place to put textiles for, for town purposes. As you may recall, not only were we collecting textiles at High Plains near the pavilion, but, uh, Simple Recycling was paying us a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton, um, for, for such collection. I reached out to Bay State Textiles, who had reached out to us a few years back, um, when we had first entered into agreement with, um, uh, with Simple Recycling, and, um, they seemed very interested in picking up the slack, and then some. Cory is here this evening with us, uh, she is the Connecticut Recycling Development Coordinator from Bay State Textiles, who can answer any questions, but, uh, what they'd like to do, and you have the facilitator agreement that has been put together, um, for us, is basically replace the bin that is, was at the community center, um, with their bin, they would pick up pretty much weekly, or more often if necessary, and also would like to place one at our transfer station, um, presumably up at the top of the hill to the left of where, um, uh, Goodwill is. I called Goodwill, I spoke to John Grabowski, who is in charge of all the, all the containers, and, um, told him this was kind of our plan, he did not have any objection because the money that was going to be collected, or the textiles collected, would be, uh, proceeds coming to the Town of Orange. It was another competitor, so to speak, they would have more reservation, but he said, nope, that, that sounds fine to us, we'd love to be, uh, um, work with you, in fact, Cory had told me, and she'll probably tell you, that they do have bins at other transfer stations where Goodwill is right next door to them as well. So, what we're asking tonight is for an approval, so Jim can sign the facilitator agreement, and then Bay State Textiles can put the, the collection bins there. They, by the way, will pay us a hundred and twenty dollars per ton, slightly more than what we were getting from, from, uh, Simple Recycling. And finally, um, Cory has mentioned to me that they are most successful with having, uh, collection bins also at schools. Now, I remember the last time we went through this, the Board of Education did not want that to happen, although I did have, and, um, Cory had given me, uh, a contact to speak to at Stratford, uh, Stratford Public Works, who also told me that they have had very fine success with Bay State, no problems whatsoever, they keep it picked up regularly, and not had any problems, and they have, I think he said, eleven bins in Stratford, mostly at the schools, and each of the schools gets the proceeds, that's the way they worked it out in Stratford, so whatever's collected at that school, the money would go...
So they track it.
PTA, or, or the schools. But for right now, you know, maybe we can expand this possibly to the schools as well, but for right now, tonight, I'm asking for approval of facilitator agreement, which would allow us to put, uh, them to put bins at the, uh, transfer station in High Plains, and if you have any questions, Cory's right here.
Hi Cory. Did he leave anything out?
I don't think so, I think he covered it all.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sell us on Bay State.
Uh, so, Bay State is a for-profit textile collection company, we work in Massachusetts and Connecticut, uh, we only place our bins on municipal, municipal property, so we're walk, we're working with, uh, schools, we're working, um, with town halls, fire stations, transfer stations, um, the program does work best when the schools do get involved. I myself have gone into the schools and done presentations and, uh, things with the kids and the students, so they can learn more about textile recycling, and then, you know, they go home, tell their parents, and their parents use the bins.
Good idea, you might try that here with, uh, you know, Dr. Scarpetti and board, um, maybe they'll be more receptive to it this time, there always is that possibility, I can speak to them, uh, first on that, but, um, how many locations here, Mitch, would they, just High Plains?
Right now, just, right now, we're just looking at the two, the High Plains and Transfer Station, I didn't think we would, since we only had it at High Plains before, I wasn't sure, we, they, they would certainly love to have it other places, but I think High Plains works well because it's centrally located, there's a lot of traffic in and out of there a lot, and it's right next to the pavilion where it's easily seen.
A third spot, right out on the outside of the entrance of Public Works on Lambert Road.
Sure.
Because there's those hoppers at that Valero station there that are constantly overflowing, so maybe if you put this...
With this port, we'd love to.
And there's plenty of room there for a person to pull in, turn around, maneuver, and all there, so that's, it could be a, a very good spot there, near the Post Road.
Listen, we, we would love to have as many spots as avail as we can, so...
It's a municipal spot, we own it.
Yep. The other thing that, um, Cory has agreed to, they're going to put on the bins, they're going to, um, affix a copy of the logo of the Town of Orange and the logo of the Orange Recycling Committee, so it will be easily, even more identifiable as a town, uh, project.
Box, yeah. All right, so that's a third spot you can explain to her, and, uh...
It's good.
To start with there, and, uh...
Fine.
Wolf Park, if it's safe.
To, listen, as many places we can do...
Come spray, come spray.
Yeah, we can start with that, um, whatever they're willing to put out, we know, because look, the, the town's going to, listen, we're, we're, the, the main thing is trying to get the textiles out of the, out of the mainstream of, of waste, um, and then, second of all, the town will be able to, um, you know, reap some benefits from it as well.
Right, so that's three that...
Great.
We have at the moment.
Maybe four.
Yeah, so... Okay, do you have anything else you would like to say about Bay State?
I don't think so, I think that's it.
You've covered it pretty good. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to be made on this facilitator agreement for the first selectman to sign?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Five unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory, appreciate you coming down tonight from Massachusetts.
Item number three is to consider and act on the request to approve tax refunds for this month totaling twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. Any questions or concerns on that?
Nope.
None? Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. The, uh, last item under new business, we had discussion last month, and we heard from the Realtor, um, Monday night, he contacted my office very late, so then he got in touch with, uh, Attorney Marino, and, um, this is for the house at six forty-three, Orange Center Road, um, which is directly across the street from Mariel Tracy, right at the entrance to Schoolhouse Lane there. We've discussed, um, clearing the back lot of it and expanding the parking over there, it will hopefully alleviate the, uh, teachers and parers and aides that are parking across the street in the, uh, Orange Congregational Church parking lot, and the, uh, structure we have opportunities with, but, uh, nothing has been decided at this very moment on that, but, uh, we will, once we get this done. Vincent checked with the Realtor, it has been winterized and the power's on and everything like that. I said to the board before we started, uh, should the town proceed with this, which I guess we will, um, has cut down those arborvitie trees right at the corner of Schoolhouse Lane and Orange Center Road, so the people trying to pull out of Schoolhouse Lane can see, it's pretty near impossible there, trying to pull out of that spot. So, um, uh, we had, after, we had met and discussed it last month, uh, we submitted the offer, had a little discussion back and forth with the, uh, property owners, and, um, came to terms with them, and, um, so, we are going to move forward with that, and, uh... So what you're doing is actually two things, you're making an approval for the first selectman to sign a, to enter into a contract with the sellers, and, uh, the second thing is to recommend to the Board of Finance to approve the purchase price, um, out of the capital fund, um, to purchase this property at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Those are the two things you will be making a motion on, should you decide that that's what you want to do. Discussion, Mitchell?
No real discussion, because I think it's a great idea, I think we should do it, and, uh, I'm very pleased to hear your report, Jim, that the, uh, the owners were willing to enter into a contract with the town for the purposes that you've already described. So with that, I would make a motion, do we need one motion for both things, or you need two different motions?
You can make one motion that allows those two items I just spoke to.
I'll make a motion that we allow the first selectman to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for six forty-three Orange Center Road, be able to sign that contract for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and to recommend to the Board of Finance that they allocate... $375,000, and to recommend to the Board of Finance that they allocate the $375,000, you say, out of the capital fund?
Capital line in the budget.
Out of the capital line in the budget.
Okay, motion is made.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any other discussion on this? This will help with that. I mean, you know, we have other expenses that are going to go along with this, but it will help with that parking situation.
A discussion related, but not related to the purchase. Seeing as we're doing this and we're making some improvements around that area, you know, I know you've had two children go through the school, you as well, I have, we have our youngest kid's going there, and people are flying in and out both ways. Might we consider making that a one-way road, going all the way around? So you come in, go all the way around?
The Board of Education has studied that. I'm not up on speaking to it. I would have to talk to Dr. Scarpetti and Bill Crowe about what they discuss with that. I know they have some sort of a program with that now, the way the buses come in there, there's not much parking in that parking lot there. I'm going to ask you, because you probably have kids younger than all of us, have you used the Mariel system recently?
No, I've only parked there to go to the playground.
Okay, oh, okay. So I'll have to do a little research on that part of it, but.
Just something to consider as we're doing this.
To make it a one-way.
Yeah.
In and, yeah, not out.
Like you just alluded to earlier, too, when you get back to Orange Center, taking a left is pretty challenging.
It's difficult to take a left to go uphill.
Sometimes it's even difficult taking a right when people coming down the hill, but especially a left, and it ties up traffic, people are waiting because somebody's taking a left.
That I would bring to the Board of Education to see. I know I can go back to Mrs. Lasto when she was the principal there, had discussions about that, I know, but I don't know what the board's thoughts were on it or anything back then when it happened, so I'm going to.
Sorry for your loss, by the way.
Leave that. Yeah, it just reminded me that I forgot to say something. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll have to look into that.
Picking up on PJ's thought, if it's not made a one-way, which definitely has some merit to it, since we now will be owning the piece of property on the corner, might we, if it stays two-way, take a piece of that property out, widen the exit out of Schoolhouse Lane so that someone going left is not holding up somebody going right? Kind of coming out of like.
Coming out of two-way?
Yeah, two-way, like kind of like coming out of High Plains Community Center. You know, if you do it right, I don't think it's lined that way, but if you do it right, you can, somebody from the right can get around you if you're waiting for a left-hand turn.
Not everybody does that.
Who does that? But if it's set up that way with lines, then you.
It's a possibility. I can't speak to it at this moment.
Please commission probably, I'll too.
But you know what? I'm going to, believe it or not, I'm going to ask for a thought from Mr. Pizzano on it, because it will also affect soccer over there, so on this possible thought at this time, all it is is a thought.
It is. It's a great thought. Thank you for thinking of this. Again, thank you for the kids, it's always good. I did drive there one time in the last week or so, a couple weeks, and they had a process. They put a sign up saying it was one-way. They did not want anyone in while buses were persistent, persistent, taking the kids in and out. So they have a plan, very similar to what you're suggesting, and I think Scarpetti or the current principal would probably know. And of course, they know what happened during COVID and.
But how would it affect your program?
Well, either way, it should accommodate the kids. I know the neighbors would not want one-way road all the time. Maybe it could be one-way just during, when you leave the kids off and pick them up, but I think Dr. Scarpetti and them have a good plan there. They've been studying it, and they changed it from COVID times where no one parked there, and all the teachers were parking across the street. And I personally parked across the street and tried to come across to help with an air conditioning problem. You don't want to cross that street. We've asked these teachers to do a tremendous job during COVID to come across the Orange Center, and there's just no crossing, it's a state highway, I guess, so we can't put a crosswalk, but.
It's frightening.
It is, no matter what time of day. I tried it early in the morning, I don't know how they did that in the rain, holding umbrellas, so this is just a great thing, but I think there is a plan. Jim, you're going the right direction, either the current principal or Dr. Scarpetti has a plan, because I went there and I was trying to get in the back, and I did not. I had to go all the way around. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the thought.
See that, Tom? Once in a while, we do agree. Not too often, but once in a while.
Somebody mark down this date.
So anyhow, with that said, motion is made, now we've had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Unanimous. Five.
He looks at me.
Committee, Pension Board.
No report.
Fred Wolf Park, ad hoc committee, any report, or you have a meeting coming up?
Oh, thanks. Yes, so we do have a meeting which is scheduled for January 24th at 7:30 in this room. That meeting will be together with the Park and Rec Department. To answer Tom's question, notice did go out, I believe, not only in some of our local papers, but also on, it's on the website, and Park and Rec also, through their committee, did, I guess, some advertisement as well. It is open to the public. We are going to be meeting with B&amp;L, our engineers, to talk about traffic and safety of Fred Wolf Park. So the more people we get to have their input, questions, concerns, is greatly appreciated. I mean, this is, this is the future of the town, and we're trying to do our best, and so input is essential to do that. So that's really all I have, unless Mr. Shanley has anything he'd like to add.
No, I think you did a good job summarizing everything.
That's a collegial pair. Capital planning, Ralph.
Well, today we got our third and last meeting for the year, and we approved 30, 36 projects. 35. 34. Yeah. We combined a couple projects into one. We eliminated two projects because they didn't meet the $20,000 threshold, and I think that was it. It's about 12 and a half million.
Wish list.
35 projects.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that? That's good. So that'll be going, moving to the Board of Finance for review also. I have to note while we're on that area, I was out this morning, Mr. Foyer was out before me, he was out at 4:30, he said, and the three areas that we have appropriated for flooding on Pine Tree Pack, Coachman's Old Country, and Brookside Glenbrook wasn't a problem at any of them today.
Wow.
The brook that flows under Pine Tree by Carla Birmingham's was down below the opening this much, he said, and the other two, there was no issues at all, but he was out checking on that this morning also, and I was out later, early but later, and yeah, there were no problems in the last storm. I was out early, and this one, he did it, and no, no problems amazingly enough, which is, which is a real good thing. The playground, the replacement playground at High Plains is going to be delivered probably next week. They were going to bring it this week, but Park and Rec got in there to remove the woodchips and top material, and it didn't go well. And so we're probably got to bring somebody in with a small machine to clean out all of the buildup over the years of composted woodchip material and all, and clean it out and put in new material, then they'll be coming to set it up, but Mother Nature's not kind to us, they're predicting more rain the end of the week again. So, yeah, so we, but we are trying, they're ready to go on that, so it will be happening. Let's see, the only thing I got, well, I have the executive session on that. I do want to thank PJ and all of you on the loss of my cousin, Dr. Ed Martino, fought Parkinson's for a long time, and that just ravaged the body. It's just very sad, a lot of positive comments. He was a hard-working, good guy, good orthodontist. There is a wake for him at Selentino Funeral Home in New Haven on this Friday at, from 4:00 to 8:00, and his funeral is at the Assumption Church in Woodbridge at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning. So thank you for that. With that said, we have one item to go into executive session for discussing the deputy fire marshal's salary. So is there a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Okay, have a good night. Okay, we're back in public session at, it looks like 8:12 or so thereabouts. We had one item in executive session to discuss a salary adjustment for the deputy fire marshal. Is there any motion to be made on that?
A motion to approve as discussed.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Unanimous by five.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.